Trying to think how my life is gonna be different when I'm with Lishel.
Crazy, isn't it?
That's supposed to be...
Oh, uh... No. Well, it looks like eleven. We have... Shorter people here get a little... Wow. Feet in the pocket. That's her... And Ross is over there.
He remembers how his parents relied on him.
You hired that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. As much as you.
He was a good...
Yeah. We voted for you.
He had his brothers and sisters.
We voted for you.
Well, it was important.
Oh, yeah. Those guys go for it.
You know, he remembers how his parents were...
Beers.
A heart was for them.
The school. We voted.
Well, I think we need to question whether...
There's purpose in not learning.
Quite that amount. I mean, even though, I think, we may get there. But I think that you're...
He was... He's right, so he's...
That's like a little bit...
The next day, he thinks about...
Where does he go?
He's coming to his marriage.
Ernie, what do you think about...
Yeah.
What do you think about the plan?
So he won't come?
About, uh... Did you vote the right way, though?
Well, no. She would...
Six to three.
I went to the National League of Cities, like, two years ago.
Maybe she'd offset the Ernie's, is what I'm thinking.
Well, hi. Respect, I like to go somewhere where it's more impressive. Eat a pin... Some of that. But, yeah, it's nice. Have some nice people there. Got a few ideas.
Call this meeting, Tony. Let's get going. You're the chairperson.
We're gonna do...
How are you?
Pretty quick.
We're gonna have any snow coming tonight, do we?
I hope we do.
Oh, what is wrong?
I love it.
Go out and roll in it.
I did.
You let the older black snow...
If your house wasn't...
You wanna see the cold one, you should start her.
If your house wasn't sixteen times bigger than mine, I'd trade and like, do my driving.
No, thank you.
Do we know, is anybody from the school, we're gonna be here?
I don't know that, Ernie. That would be one of those things I don't know. One of the only things...
No, I don't know.
Well, we need a quorum from the supervisors and from the council to start the meeting, and we do have a quorum, and here comes Pete.
Pete is a quorum by himself.
Yep, Pete is a quorum by himself.
Yes.
That's right. Pull up a chair, sir. Actually, the chair's pulled up already. Whichever one you like.
That's what they...
Okay. City Conference Board will come to order. Roll call.
Champion?
Here.
Tanner?
Here.
Lehman?
Which?
Ernie?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Vanderhoff?
Here.
Wilburn?
Here.
Arnie?
Here.
Mike Lehman?
Here.
Uh, Nuzhul?
Stutzman?
Here.
Go ahead, like, to take it.
Goodlaxen?
Yes.
Wallace?
Here.
Okay, we need to act on the minutes of the September 24th board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm on it.
Moved by O'Donnell, seconded by Wallace. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of procedure, though?
Yes.
You need a quorum within your body to second? You have...
Need a quorum between...
Two bodies.
We need... No. No. Need a quorum of two bodies in order to have the meeting.
To vote on it, though.
Each... Each body gets one vote, is that correct? Pete is the one vote, even without a quorum.
His vote will not count. He can participate in the discussion, but his vote won't count unless you have a quorum.
So we need another second?
Do we need a different second?
I don't think so.
No. All right. Dennis, present the budget, please.
Well, late this afternoon, the county auditor's office told us about a change in the total amount of value that we can levy against, so there will be a small change in our estimated levy rate. We'll have that before the next, uh, before the public hearing at the next meeting. And it's just a minor change. Shouldn't affect things. Uh, there is a brief explanation of each of the changes in the cover letter, and, uh, most of them are pretty routine, with the exception of the adjust... The adjustment to match the Johnson County assessor's salary. There's a request for a new half-time clerical person. Uh, over the last several years, the conference board has made an effort to keep the Iowa City assessor's salary the same as the Johnson County assessor's salary. And the chief deputy in that office was also appointed this last year to replace the assessor. And at that time, the salary was, uh, negotiated and increased by ten percent. Uh, salaries of assessors in comparable jurisdictions were used to arrive at the number, and in this budget, I've included an adjustment to match the Johnson County assessor's salary for your discussion. Also, we're asking for an additional part-time, halftime employee, mainly because of staffing problems for vacation and sick time. Uh, employees gone from the office for required education. And we also have a new employee who's a member of the National Guard and will be away for training. Three employees in the lot... In the office last year lost vacation time because they... They did not use their allotted, uh, vacation, and, uh, we expect about the same thing to happen this year, unless we can force them to take more vacations somehow. This seems to be a good answer. I think a lot of people were reluctant to take vacation because of the staffing problems it caused us. Um, I'd happy... I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have about other items in the budget.
It's good.
You said that there was a ten percent increase when you were hired as assessor?
I'm sorry. The Johnson County assessor was appointed this last year also, and his salary was increased ten percent at that time. In the past, we've kept the salaries at the same level, so that would take a ten percent increase in my salary to do that.
We haven't really kept them at the same level. We worked toward getting them there, but it was never done automatically. Like, at one time, there was a kind of discrepancy, so every year, we tried to close that discrepancy. But it wasn't a goal that was met immediately. We thought it was fair they'd be at the same salary, but it wasn't an absolute goal.
The county assessor achieved the... The pay raise for himself and several other staff in his office by eliminating the position of a second deputy, which saved about...
Salary's fifty now.
About, yeah.
But now they're asking for another employee.
This is the...
That was the county. The county one.
Okay. So this is an artificial raise, sort of, in a... In respect to the county.
Yeah. I was wondering if there was any comparable reorganization in the city assessor's office.
Uh, the city assessor's office is already, uh, two people fewer than their office. I don't think we could afford to eliminate another position.
Well, you're asking for another position, and, uh, in my mind, uh, that's a huge jump at this point in time, and if I were to fund a new halftime person, then I wouldn't give any increase at this point in time to city assessor. For that adjustment of twelve thousand...
An adjustment of twelve thousand is closer to, uh, a twenty percent increase, apparently. Now, uh...
Well...
Dennis, uh, I presume that prior to the hiring of the new county assessor, the city assessor's salary was already... Wasn't comparable.
No, that, uh, that twelve thousand also includes an increase for the chief deputy assessor.
I see that.
It was... Her salary is based on the assessor's salary, the percentage.
The county... Previous county assessor was sixty-three thousand five hundred. Uh, I think Dennis must have inherited Dan's salary, sixty-three thousand three forty, so they were... But the...
But the hiring of the new person and the ten percent increase in... In that one has created this huge jump, and, uh, considering what we're, uh, being asked to do within the city for salaries and new, uh, line items, uh, I can't do both of those at all, in my mind. I couldn't do either.
Well, I just have a question. The... Maybe my... I've been here too long today, but it says, "The adjustment to match the county assessor is twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars," which is a lot more than ten percent of six... Sixty-three thousand three hundred and forty.
But then they added some more because they cut a part-time clerk and added that into...
The halftime clerk is listed as twelve thousand four hundred and eighty.
But... But what Mike just said to us was, "At the county level, when they hired and then they eliminated part of a salary in another place and gave that also to the new county assessor." That's why there's such a huge increase.
Oh, so it is quite a bit more. It's almost...
Absolutely.
And also, the... The increase for the assessor's salary is six thousand six sixty-four. The increase for the deputy assessor is five thousand six seventy. That totals twelve thousand three thirty-four.
I wouldn't mind having pay raises that high, but I can't deal with that.
Can't either.
I'd like to clarify one thing. Board of Supervisors voted against that pay raise. Like, there was four against the one, four, and the school board and multi-mayor's overgrown it. So it's actually due to...
Okay. Well...
Other discussion?
So we've got mayors of all the Johnson County towns other than Iowa City setting the city assessor's salary.
That vote was three to two, also, the mayor's. Wasn't... School board was two oh. Was not a... It was already ruled, but it was not a percent agreement.
Now, can we change that vote? Tell me about it.
We can't change that vote. We're dealing with...
But we don't have...
We don't have to have the policy of making the city assessor's salary the same as...
They never had a policy like that.
Well, we did.
We... We had a...
Years ago, and it...
Assume policy.
And, in this case, if we give a new part-time employee, I would say no increase for the, uh, city assessor. Being first year in the job.
I think also, we've gotta think about... I mean, I... I think the pay raise is exorbitant, but I'm wondering, do we really need another person in that office? I mean, we're not hiring a new fire seater.
Mm-hmm.
And do we really need another new person? I mean, people... Two people at lunchtime, or why do we need two people at lunchtime?
You wanna address that, Dennis? You're certain to be.
Well, I think I outlined, uh, some of the reasons that we... We asked for that, mostly because of staffing. Uh, had a lot of unused vacation. We have a new employee with, uh, National Guard commitment. Um, any time that there's more than two people gone, it puts kind of a stress on things. Uh, we do have people working outside of the office quite a bit, and they have to come back into the office to help cover lunches and things like that.
So how big... I mean, the city isn't that large for them to come back in.
Right.
So how big a deal is that to have them come back in?
It just takes time away from... From their duties in the field of assessing new construction and like that.
And this is not a reappraisal year?
No.
Okay. I would look at it next...
Well, well, next year is, yes.
Next... I would look at it in a year from now, but, uh, maybe we can hold off for a year.
I would hold off on the employee. And what about the salary?
Well, in your budget, FYO three proposal, the salaries that are listed are, uh... Do they represent a three and a half percent increase?
Yes.
So the numbers that...
That are in there, right?
That are in there do represent a three and a half, which I think is, uh... I suppose that's based on cost, really.
No.
So what are you saying?
Assume a price index is what, this year? It's not that high.
One point eight or something.
Great. Well, I would think that two point eight would be what we ought to be looking at, then, since this is first year, uh, for a new employee as the city assessor.
Well, the entire budget is based... All of the employees are based on three and a half percent. Is that correct?
That's right.
I don't have any positive three and a half.
I don't have a problem with the three and a half. That's what everybody else got.
Okay. Which are the salaries on the...
I don't know.
Um, if... They're not numbered, too.
What?
They're not numbered.
She's in the computer.
Oh, you look... salaries? Three of them. Eight seven of the info check.
Okay. Kevin trouble.
These all include a three and a half percent adjustment, just being oh-two, oh-three.
Okay. All right, I'll go with the three and a half, if that's what the city wants to do.
Well, we're gonna be set... We're gonna be setting a public hearing on the budget, but we need to give some indication. Is there other discussion? There are two...
We'll be telling.
There are two major items. One being a twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollar line item to increase the assessor's budget and the first deputy, which is a percentage of the assessor's budget. And an item for twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for a halftime clerk. Is there further discussion on those items? Yes, Steve?
I have a question for Dennis. You had mentioned a new division objective to institute, uh, program of physical inspection of properties where selling price slash assessment ratios fall outside the acceptable standard. How much will that cost, and how much is... Explain what that is exactly, and how much do you expect it will cost in additional money, and how much this new clerk might help with that?
Uh, I don't think it'll cost additional money. The... The new clerk would just... Would just be helpful as far as staffing and keeping people out in the field a little bit more to do inspections. Uh, there aren't a tremendous number, so, I mean, we get six hundred and seventy-five good, uh, residential sales a year. Um, probably, you know, fifteen to twenty percent of those would fall outside of those norms if we'd wanna get a look at the house, so it's not gonna add a tremendous amount of inspections, but it's... It's something that we think will be helpful.
And this is a program that hadn't been done in the past?
Uh, kind of on a... On a spot basis. We're gonna try to be more systematic about it.
So you feel you have inspectors now to handle that extra...
Yes, that's something we think we can handle.
Allison?
Other discussion?
Then what?
Do we need a motion? We obviously need to set a public hearing, but do we need a motion... A motion to make any changes in this budget if we choose to do that?
Uh...
On the proposal for the public hearing?
You need... Yes, you'll need to have a motion to change items, uh...
Mm-hmm.
To three and a half?
Well, the three and a half is proposed in the budget. That's the way it's been presented to us.
It's the equalization piece.
So then why would we need a motion if that's what's proposed?
We'd need a motion not to put in the dollars for the equalization to the county assessor and a motion if we choose not to hire another...
Did you just move those, Steve?
Yes, I did.
Need a motion to delete the... The amount, uh, which would be an adjustment to match the county assessor and to delete the halftime clerk. That motion is made by Vanderhoff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You can't second it.
Okay.
Seconded by Mike Lehman. Discussion? Would that mean the assessor would get a three and a half percent increase as well? Yes.
Yes.
It would mean that the budget as presented for the public hearing would include the three and a half percent that has been included in the proposal, but eliminating the two lines relevant to the adjustment to match the county assessor and the halftime clerk.
Right.
Other discussion? Do we need a roll call vote on this? Yeah. I don't think we do.
We have to... The... Each group has to...
Okay. Roll call.
You need a roll call of each body to this vote?
Yes.
Champion?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Uh, Ernie Lehman?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Vanderhoff?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Um, Harney?
Yes.
Mike Lehman?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And yes, so we're here to... I'm here now.
Oh.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Nuzhul?
Motion passes?
Motion carries. Now, we just set a date for a public hearing. Is that... Public hearing to be two weeks from tonight?
Um, I don't think you're meeting two weeks from tonight, are you?
Uh, that's February eighteenth, and we are... Work session is the nineteenth.
Normally, we would've met one month from tonight, but, uh... Or four weeks, but you're not meeting that night either, I guess. It's the... The February twenty-seventh would be the... The, um, meeting that would give us time to publish the budget and paper.
The nineteenth didn't work either.
That would be a little too soon.
That's correct. Yes.
We have a council meeting at four, and then at seven.
Oh, so we could have...
It's tentatively planned it for the work session. We won't know... We won't finalize that until...
But we could do this conference board...
Number four.
What time are you thinking in terms of conference board?
You can set it whatever time you'd like.
If people are agreeable, it's maybe easier to put it at the front end of that work session at four o'clock.
Look, the county... That may be hardly good.
I know.
The county board is gonna be in Des Moines for the county a day, but we should be done with ISAC staff by two-thirty at the latest, which would give us a couple hours home.
Four-thirty, so...
So probably, we won't be in town till probably four-thirty, so sometime after four-thirty.
Well, our meeting is tentative...
Tentatively scheduled for what time?
The formal is set for seven. Your work session is tentatively set for four.
Could be about six.
And that adjusts, obviously.
Well, I was gonna say, if we could set it for...
Six-thirty.
Five-thirty or so. Five or five... Five-thirty, would that work? Five-thirty would work. It should be a rather quick meeting.
It should be, but Ernie, five-thirty, that's an odd time if the public is coming.
What about six-thirty?
Because nobody ever comes, but...
Well, six-thirty, the council... People are gonna be here for the council meeting.
Just before the council meeting.
About six.
But Ernie, this is a five-minute meeting, man.
But that's why I thought five-thirty should be right at the end of the work session, and then at five-thirty, a quick meeting, we don't have to be back here till seven o'clock.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that's okay.
Does five-thirty work for everybody?
Yes, that'd be fine. I see, that's a good reason.
Well, if it's snowy, or who knows what happens?
Well, if it's snowy, what happens? We don't have it.
We both own, anyway. If they don't come, we don't have a quorum.
I mean, I go out and...
Yeah. Do we have a motion to set the public hearing for five-thirty on the twenty-seventh of February?
I would be delighted to make that motion.
All right. Moved by O'Donnell, seconded by Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment of a board of review member?
Excuse me, Ernie?
Yes.
On the budget, did we have a... A vote, both to eliminate the, uh... The two items and to...
Vote was to delete those two items.
Okay, now, we needed a motion to accept the proposed budget as amended for publication.
So moved. Moved by Nuzhul, seconded by O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We just got the motion, and it carries. And we set the public hearing. Now, we're going to appoint a board of review member. We have one application, and that's a person who's presently serving. Richard Donahue, do we have a motion to approve that person?
So moved.
Moved by Vanderhoff, seconded by Harney. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Seconded by Vanderhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
The vote is... Meeting is adjourned until the twenty-seventh at five-thirty. Thank you very much. This is... You know, these meetings remind me a lot of your council meetings.
Absolutely.
In and out done.
Would you believe we were done at eight-twenty-six or something? It's a mess meeting. Now, our budget meetings haven't done that, but...
Those are gonna be long.
Uh, and this... This next one, that... That day is gonna be a huge, long day, um, just because of public hearing on our budget.
Yeah, this day could be a very long day.
Good evening.
Ernie? Good to see you. Stay warm.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we're good, so I've been quite a shock. Sixty-six-five. Ah! Terry? Okay, they're gonna get ready. Yes. All right. All right. That's how we pay you. We give you a contribution every time you're not going. Okay. Ernie?
Okay, folks, let's get the work session started.
We have one item to take care of before...
Mr. Mayor, we have a late addition to the agenda. John, would you like to come to the podium, please? John is here representing G.A. Malone's, and he would like to be at... No, come to the podium over there, sir. There you go, right over there.
John? You move it to the... DA?
There you go. And John would like to be added late, and he can tell you a little bit about... Okay?
Um, I'm in the process...
What's your last name, John?
Maureen.
You need a roll call of each body to this vote.
Yes.
Um, Champion?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Uh, Ernie Lehman?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Vanderhoff?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Um, Harney?
Yes.
Mike Lehman?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And yes, so we're here too. I'm here now.
Oh.
Thanks.
Thank you. Innujil.
Motion carries. Now, we just set a date for a public hearing. Is that a public hearing to be two weeks from tonight?
I know. Um, I don't think you're meeting two weeks from tonight, are you?
We are. That's February 18th, and we are, work session is the 19th.
Normally, we would have met one month from tonight, but, or four weeks, but you're not meeting that night either, I guess. It's the, the February 27th would be the, the meeting that would give us time to publish the budget and paper.
The 19th didn't work either.
That would be a little too soon.
Yes.
We have a council meeting at 4:00 and then at 7:00.
Oh, so we could have...
It's tentatively planned it for the work session. We won't know, we won't finalize that until...
But we could do this conference board...
Number four.
What, what time are you thinking in terms of conference board?
You can set it whatever time you'd like.
If people are agreeable, it's maybe easier to put it at the front end of that work session at 4:00.
Look, the county...
That may be hardly good.
I know.
The county board is going to be in Des Moines for the county a day, but we should be done with ISAC staff by 2:30 at the latest, which would give us a couple hours home.
4:30, so...
So probably, we won't be in town till probably 4:30, so sometime after 4:30.
Well, our meeting is tentative, tentatively scheduled for what time?
The formal is set for 7:00. Your work session is tentatively set for 4:00.
Could be about 6:00.
And that adjusts, obviously.
Well, I was gonna say, if we could set it for 5:30 or so, 5:00 or 5:30, would that work?
5:30 would work.
It should be a rather quick meeting.
It should be, but Ernie, 5:30, that's an odd time if the public is coming.
What about 6:30?
Because nobody ever comes.
Well, 6:30, the council, people are gonna be here for the council meeting.
Just before the council meeting.
About 6:00.
But Ernie, this is a five-minute meeting now.
But, that's why I thought 5:30 should be right at the end of the work session. And then at 5:30, a quick meeting, we don't have to be back here till 7:00.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that's okay.
Does 5:30 work for everybody?
Yes, that'd be fine. I see, that's a good reason.
Well, if it's snowy, or who knows what happens?
Well, if it's snowy, what happens? We don't have it.
We both own anyway. If they don't come, we don't have a quorum.
I mean, I go out and...
Yeah. Do we have a motion to set the public hearing for 5:30 on the 27th of February?
I would be delighted to make that motion.
All right. Moved by O'Donnell, seconded by Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment of a board of review member?
Excuse me, Ernie?
Yes.
On the budget, did we have a, a vote, both to eliminate the, the two items and to...
Or was to delete those two items?
Okay, no, we, we needed a motion to accept the proposed budget as amended for publication.
So moved. Moved by Innujil, seconded by O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We just got the motion and it carries. And we set the public hearing. Now, we're going to appoint a board of review member. We have one application, and that's a person who's presently serving. Richard Donahue, do we have a motion to approve that person?
So moved.
Moved by Vanderhoff, seconded by Harney. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Seconded by Vanderhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
The vote is, meeting is adjourned until the 27th at 5:30.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is, you know, these meetings remind me a lot of your good council meetings.
Absolutely.
In and out done.
Would you believe we were done at 8:26 or something? It's a mess meeting. Now, our budget meetings haven't done that, but...
Those are gonna be long.
Uh, and this, this next one, that, that day is gonna be a huge long day, um, just because of public hearing on our budget.
Yeah, it's gonna be a very long day.
Good evening.
Ernie?
Sure.
See you.
Stay warm.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we're good, so I've been quite a shock.
All right.
All right. That's how we pay you. We give you a contribution every time you're not gone. Okay. Ernie? We have one item to take care of before...
Mr. Mayor, we have a late addition to the agenda. John, would you like to come to the podium, please? John is here representing G.A. Malone's, and he would like to be at, no, come to the podium over there, sir. There you go, right over there.
John?
There you go. And John would like to be added late, and he can tell you a little bit about, okay?
Um, I'm in the process...
What's your last name, John?
Maureen.
Maureen, okay, thank you.
I'm in the process of buying Malone's from Kippole, and I would like to be added late to the city council agenda for tomorrow.
Okay. For?
Liquor license.
Liquor license.
Class, a Class C liquor license.
Okay.
Okay. It will be contingent upon, uh, final papers, uh, coming in. We're still short a couple of signed releases, but I understand they're forthcoming.
Okay. Is that okay with council?
Yeah. Thank you.
Ron?
Thank you.
It was easy. I wish everything was that easy.
It is.
Okay. We have Jet Air introductions. Ron?
Actually, I'm gonna take over that hearing.
That's fine. I just says Ron on this one.
Well, it does. Hello again, everybody. Rick Masquerie with the Chair of the Airport Commission, and just wanted to say a couple words. First of all, we, as we spoke about earlier, we have a new fixed base operator here at Iowa City. Fixed base operator basically means that they provide the services of fueling and charter and, and maintenance for aircraft, and they have started with us on January 1st. Uh, I want to just say one quick mention to thank the, our interim FBO, which would be IOW Arrow, who did outstanding job for us during the, the transition period last year. But, uh, I'd like to introduce Harold Timmons and the rest of the, uh, Jet Air crew to come on up and introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about their, about their, uh, organization.
Thanks, Rick.
Well, you brought the whole air force, didn't you?
Hey, need a lot of help. I'm Harold Timmons, and, uh, I'm President of Jet Air Incorporated. I have with me tonight, this is, uh, Ron Duffy. He's our manager and associate here at the Iowa Airport. Barry Barash, who's been my long-term partner in this endeavor, and Philip Wilford, who's my number-one assistant. Uh, he's young, he does all the work. I just try to keep him directed. And, uh, we're, we're happy to be out here. We're real, we're real pleased with what we see at the Iowa City Airport. We think there's a lot of potential there, and, uh, a lot of activity, and we certainly invite everyone to come out there. We've, for the folks that are here, I've got some, some handouts here that gives a little bit of an introduction. I think that was in a different cover, but if there's enough there. Uh, it gives you some idea of the services that we do, and, uh...
Okay.
Some of the aircraft, some of the things we've...
Not intentionally, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, I don't have any prepared speech, but we'd certainly answer any questions. We hope to have some open houses coming up here pretty quick. Soon as the weather moderates a little bit, then we get ourself, get our feet on the ground and running. Uh, it takes a little time. Anytime you start a new business, even though we've been in this business about 33 years, it, it takes a little bit of time to get things up and going. We've, we've made considerable investment out there so far, and, uh, we're in the process of moving airplanes to the location. We'll actually be basing, uh, we have, what do we have there right now, Ron? Three or four airplanes?
Probably two or five right now.
Five, five right now. Depends on, and, uh, we'll be moving more and bigger airplanes as, as the business grows and as we get our organization up and running, so.
Well, welcome to Iowa City.
We love having you here.
We're pretty proud of that airport. We've spent a lot of money on it, and... Oh, no, it is. It's a beautiful airport. Very few cities the size of Iowa City have an airport as nice as that one, and I think the council has been very, very supportive for that airport over the years. We're pleased to have you.
Well, thank you, and I would, I would say you're absolutely right. Uh, I've been in this business long enough. I think I've landed in probably almost every airport in the United States and most of them in North America, and you certainly have an outstanding facility, especially for a, a location this size.
For a little...
Very quality, very quality.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay, we're not gonna take a lot of time.
Okay, just, I'd like to ask you, when you looked at this thing, what couple of things attracted you the most? And I'm gonna ask you what you think it may cause the...
Certainly...
Something you have to work through.
The thing that attracted us is certainly the facilities, our, our, our real quality facilities, well-done, well-set up for, for the type of operation, and then we feel there's a great potential in this area. And especially for our-sized operation, it, we've, we just feel there's a potential here.
What are the, what are the challenge, couple of challenges?
Pardon?
What are a couple of the challenges that you see?
Oh, with any business is, uh, just getting to know the customers, getting people on board to do what we need to do, and, uh, just time. Time and money.
Okay.
We know what that is.
So...
Good to hear.
Well, thank you for...
Thank you for coming.
Well, well.
This was a chore just to get you all here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Karen Franklin, you're up.
Okay, this should be quick. The first item is to consider setting a public hearing for February 19th to rezone a small sliver of property for Oak Knoll, so you'll need to confuse yourself from that.
I will.
Ernie. Um, second item is setting a public hearing for February 19th to amend the sensitive areas development plans for Lot 3 and 4 of Lot 53 of Walden Hills. This is a redo of the Burns Project over on the west side. Um, Item C, Karen?
Yes? Excuse me, on, on that one, do we have any updated information about the number of units of assisted living in the, the city, and what, uh, whether that state survey has been done on assisted living?
I'll, I'll check with Steve Nasby on that.
Okay, please do.
What was this in regards to...
So you want the total number of assisted living units that we have in Iowa City?
Mm-hmm, and, and occupancy in those, and then whether the state has, has done that survey on, uh, both nursing home and assisted living units in Iowa City.
Although, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, the rezoning is relative to, uh, density, not what goes into those properties. Is that correct?
Well, this, this is a change from a, uh, basically a subsidized apartment to an assisted living type of facility, so it's...
I mean, is there a zone?
It's a different use.
No, there isn't, there isn't a zone for assisted living.
And the hearing is on the zoning, though?
Yes, it is.
On, on this particular piece, but we also have the notice in the packet...
Right.
Of, uh, wanting expedited, uh...
That's in here, too.
Consideration, so they can get tax credits.
Consideration on, on that, so they can get tax credits, and I'm wanting to know this other information before I make a decision on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, Item C then, uh, setting a public hearing for February 19th on an ordinance to amend, um, the zoning ordinance, the CI-1 zone, commercial intensive zone, to allow grocery stores. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting tonight, and I should be able to tell you tomorrow whether they are going to want to have a consultation meeting with the council. Um, given their recommendation to you, which is not in line with the council's, uh, majority wishes, the resolution would direct you to have a joint meeting. However, planning and zoning can decline.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When we had our last joint meeting in regards to this issue, what was the majority of the, it seemed to me that majority of planning and zoning was agreeing to the concept of a grocery store, but not the method per se. There were...
Not that location. Not that location.
I didn't...
There was something they did agree to if we changed it in a certain way, and I, I have a little confusion about.
I don't think that's right. There was one, one commissioner who voted with the majority in denying the application, who said that this was a different, a different situation. And he might not vote the same way, but I did not hear planning and zoning concurring with council on this.
No.
I may have misunderstood.
There was one, initially, there was one commissioner that, uh, voted in favor of the rezoning, and then you're right, that during the discussion, there was one commissioner, Don Ancio, who indicated that he might be willing to look...
Might, right.
At a change in the zoning, but there was no consensus expressed by the total group, yeah.
We agreed rather than changing the zoning, we'd find a way to put it in that zone.
Well, we...
That's what you directed...
Right.
To refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Item D is a public hearing to rezone approximately .63 acres located at 707 North Dubuque Street. Oh.
And what did we ever change?
There's no show.
I know.
It's right, there isn't. Still no show.
Cut to the American music, Ross.
What?
Ah, shit.
Video one. This?
The touch.
Video one.
I don't know why that would happen. Um, okay.
Computer one. Computer two.
Well, we're trying to get that, does anyone here at this table know the change that we got?
What, for the...
No, no.
For that area?
No, we got new 7D.
Could you hit the light a minute?
This is 7, not 7D.
Yeah, it is.
Mitch brought up revised 7D.
This is what we're, we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
Well, we have irresolvable technical difficulties that I can't figure out. So, this is all stuff that's in your packet. What you were going to see would have been the location map to show you where this is. It's on Dubuque Street, um, right near the frat houses, um, between Ronald's and Brown, along the river. And the request here is rezoning to OSA RM44. The issues have had to do with the steep slopes in this area and the protected slopes. These are man-made protected slopes, and therefore, uh, the developer is unable to work within those man-made protected slopes, so long as it is engineered to show that those slopes will be stable. What has been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, a 7-0 vote, uh, staff recommended approval also, is that this be approved, subject to the final site plan being a detailed plan, which our city engineer can verify that the, uh, stability of the slopes will be handled, and that any drainage that goes from this property will not affect the fraternity house to the north.
Tell me about the flood, flood plain in there and the parking that is gonna be down below.
Um, the flood plain does not get close to the parking. The parking will be underneath the building, and then there's a number of approximately six, mm, I can't remember the number of spaces that are surface parking in the back of the building, which will be defined by a retaining wall, and then there's vegetation between that retaining wall and the river. The flood plain does not get up to that point.
The hundred year.
Right. This, um, this site, it is pretty dramatic, if you've ever been down in there.
I've been there.
Where the house is now, this building will be closer to Dubuque Street. You will see two stories at Dubuque Street, and you will see, um, three stories and the retaining wall on the west side of the river. I wish I could get these illustrations up.
Are you saying retaining wall, or is that a, 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 a barrier wall, or, uh, so you can't see the, all the cars, the full height of the car?
The, the wall is to, is a retaining wall. However, there's a requirement that there be vegetation put up at that level also, that will soften that wall and mask the cars. I'm not gonna say that you'll never be able to see a car there.
But, but, so I was thinking that there...
But if you're sitting on, if you're in a boat on the river, what you will see will be the plantings and the wall behind it.
Okay.
Does...
I can't wait.
How far, uh, does the private property go? Do we own anything along the river, or is...
No, we don't. Um, we have talked about, well, this is property that we have considered involving in the, uh, riverbank erosion control project, the 206 project that we were working with the Corps in Coralville on, which is in the stream, in the river corridor from about this point north up by Waterworks Park. Uh, one of the parts of that project was to look at, uh, bank stabilization along there, and the property owner, or Mr. Svoiboda, has been cooperative in terms of working with us on that. Whether we actually do that part or not is still in question, because of an inability to get to the fraternity houses on the other, either side. But we do not own property there now, nor do we own an easement.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Sorry, I didn't have the visuals there. Um, Item E is first consideration on the Lindeman subdivision rezoning for the sensitive areas ordinance. We went over that the last time. Item F, a first consideration on the vacation of the north-south alley in Block 102. This is in conjunction with the near south-side transportation center. Item G is first consideration on the vacation of a portion of North Gate Drive, um, up around the Highlander. Yes.
Carol, Karen, um, what, uh, what in, in a simple sentence, what, what does this do?
Um, this area is being re-subdivided such that North Gate Drive, now as you go in, it's completed to a certain point, then the pavement stops. The plat that has already been approved allows that road to continue and then to go north. With the re-subdivision, the lots are slightly reconfigured such that that northerly leg of it moves a little bit east. What that means is they have to vacate the old right-of-way before they plat the new, because it had already gone through a plat. And so this, this vacation is just a process to enable that new plat to be completed, and there not to be any discrepancies in where the road is.
So, so basically, it's a bookkeeping entry?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Um, Item H is the annexation of the Iowa City Care Center resolution. Item I is first consideration on, of rezoning for that. Item J, um, I'll ask you to do indefinite deferral. We are waiting for an offer from Oak Knoll on this property. And Item K is the final plat of Oak 6 Edition, which we've been over before. It was not ready because of drawings and legal papers. It is now ready to go. And I'm done.
Very good.
Ernie?
Robert, Robert, would you speak into the microphone?
If you're gonna talk about that, I'm gonna sit down, because I...
I don't think that chair would be very comfortable for me. Uh, Karen, I just, I just wanted to mention that, that offer will be in, uh, tomorrow morning. I'm awaiting a, a check for the earnest money. We have the appraisal, uh, and I don't know if that affects anything on the agenda, but you'll have it tomorrow morning.
I think we still wanna defer. What we'll do is then get the disposition process started, and we'll have the final reading on the ordinance to vacate concurrently with the resolution to convey.
Okay.
Yeah.
Earnest money, is there something you wanna tell us, Ernie?
Yeah.
That's a little much, though, guys. Okay.
Now, agenda item.
What? How much is it?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note that, uh, Agenda item number nine, which was, uh, a hearing and a resolution assessing the penalty. The establishment has paid the civil penalty. A hearing will not be necessary, and it'll be a resolution accepting payment. Your take.
Number 12, we should comment on. We got an outstanding bid.
Oh, right.
Scott Boulevard extension, uh, a million, million one under.
Do you see where those three bids are within...
Yeah.
$54,000, if they're on.
That's incredible.
Can I ask, I'll just ask a simple question, and it's, would we, uh, accept these $300 civil penalties? Why can't we just list all those places? Why do we have to have a resolution for each one, if they've already paid them?
This one hadn't paid, and it...
They come in separately, at different times.
We did accept the other ones by consent calendar.
Okay, thanks.
Normally, right, we put them on the consent calendar. This one wasn't paid at the time the agenda was done.
Always looking for times.
So we still have one to have a hearing.
At this point, now, they could still pay up, up through tomorrow, so...
I see, okay, thanks.
Rick.
Before you go, Karen, just a quick question. What changed with this new 7D about the result?
Um, there was an erroneous reference to a conditional zoning agreement, which we deleted, and we also added a number two under the, now therefore be it ordained, that just clearly refers to the site plan after the legal description.
Was this clerical kind of stuff?
It's, it's, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Ernie, I was just gonna mention that the DOT did us a big favor on the bids on Scott Boulevard, and that they issued a memo to all the payers in the state, telling them that the DOT has no significant projects to bid until this fall. So that made the bid climate very different than what we normally face right now.
Tremendous.
We can thank them for that.
Is there, is there any wetland involved in any of that, any wetland areas?
Yes, there is.
And how, how are we, how's that beginning?
We are mitigating the wetland losses in a site that is east of the, excuse me, west of the project and south of Ralston Creek.
So we're, and we're following the same rules that were in order prior to the, um, changes at the, uh, national level?
Right, we're following the, the Fed's regulations.
Previous regulations. I don't think those regulations are in effect anymore.
This particular wetland comes under the new Fed regulations as well as the old, because it's connected to a Blue Line stream.
So there's no...
Did no change.
There's no change, okay.
Thank you, Rick. Other agenda items?
The next item, Board and Commission Member Child Care, we're gonna defer that one till a later work session. Okay. PDI tip proposal, David.
I'm just gonna use old-fashioned.
Get him pencil?
Probably something, probably something we understand.
The Council Economic Development Committee, um, has briefly discussed, uh, the idea of, um, preparing areas for development, or redevelopment, or expansion... areas for development or redevelopment or expansion projects by having TIF mechanisms in place in the event we ever need to use tax increment financing for a project. As you may recall from previous projects, that the process to establish an urban renewal plan in a TIF district can take up to approximately three months. Given the timing for some projects, that could be an issue. The other issue, well, that could be an issue. So to have the mechanism in place to allow us to use TIF financing is something the council may want to do. Again, this is just having the mechanism in place. We may use it or may not use it, but it would be to have the mechanism in place. Before I talk about that, I just want to briefly remind the council that the council has a number of different tools that you have identified that you'd like to use to assist economic development projects. Those on the left-hand side occur more in the form of direct loans and grants while those on the right-hand side deal mainly with property tax relief of some sort. And tax increment financing fits within that category and it also can be used in the form of a grant. In the past, the council has talked about using TIF financing for debt financing of public infrastructure projects, debt financing for private improvements, and the last category is a property tax rebate over a period of time. That last tool is the only one we have used so far for economic development projects up to this point. We have used debt financing for private improvements for Villa Garden, which was a low-income At this point in time, we have four tax increment financing districts, Northgate Corporate Park, Scott Six Industrial Park, Sycamore and First Avenue, and then University Project, City University Project One or the downtown urban renewal area we just recently designated as a TIF district. There's also been discussion in the future of potentially designating the Aviation Commerce Park as a tax increment financing district. And when the council has discussed and Economic Development Committee, I guess more specifically, has discussed the extension of Mormon Truck Boulevard, there's been some discussion as we try to encourage commercial and industrial development in that area, that we have tax increment financing as a tool, as an available tool for projects that may need it down in that area. I point this all out as we talk about BDI to give you a background on how we use tax increment financing and thoughts about how we may use it in the future so you keep a bigger picture on this tool and how it fits into our economic development program.
Wait, before you take that down, where's the villa?
It's been paid off.
Villa Garden isn't a commercial industrial TIF, that's why I didn't list it. But Villa Garden is basically just the Villa Garden, it is just the Villa Garden project behind Beverly Plaza. So just the parcel that was, or that is Villa Garden was designated as a TIF district.
That was industrial-
The old villa.
Industrial text, abatement, partial industrial exemption that that was under?
Pardon?
What program was that under?
Tax increment financing. And it was designated for low-income housing.
So it was set as a district just for that one?
Correct.
One place? That was the only other place that we had a TIF district besides those that you listed?
That the city has established, correct.
Okay. But it's still, it's still in existence?
Yes, we have never repealed that TIF district. Again, just a quick summary of how we've used tax increment financing up to this point. The three projects that we have used the tool for have all been in the form of TIF rebate, Owens Brockway, Seaberry and Smith, and then Sycamore Mall. The last project that's listed there is Plaza Towers, which will be, is under consideration by the city and that project would be TIF bonds or in, in the form of a direct grant to the project to go forward.
We also have the, the White Way.
Yeah, the White Way.
That's not tax increment financing.
It's abatement, but it's another one of the tools that we are using.
Correct, but it's not tax increment financing, but it was one of those other tools that we have listed.
It comes out essentially to be the same thing in many ways in terms of money that the owner does not pay for the increased tax.
It doesn't have to be the same though.
No, no, but I'm saying the White Way compared to-
The rebate.
Compared to a rebate, basically the same. How it happens is different, but basically the same sort of tax savings that goes to the developer.
Is this, is this a time to ask a question? We know our, our good neighbors to the west have created a little bit of a political activity. Can we anticipate that the school district in the county will waive their rights like they did previously to collect their shares of tax?
They have review rights. I don't know if they have rights to deny it.
That's correct.
They do not have the right.
To deny it. They have, there is a process in which a consultation can be held, consultation is held and then they're able to provide formal written comment on the proposed use of tax increment financing. And then the council, or the city has to respond in seven days to those comments after the city receives those comments and so many days before the public hearing.
So, so in essence, they were smart not to read, to, to contest because it's a wasted area of time and effort.
Urban, we're just talking about setting up a district. We're not talking about approving anything.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the whole thing. The next thing is at what point, when the, when the city takes on the risk, do we get a percent of ownership? Okay, that's all right.
So that, up to this point, giving you a background on tax increment financing and how it's been used in the community. As we go and start to talk about establishing a TIF district for BDI, staff strongly encourages you that you, that we would establish specific goals for why we would want to use tax increment financing in this area and specific guidelines for projects that, in order, specific guidelines that a project would have to meet in order to qualify for tax increment financing. And staff's recommendation in that point is as we designate more and more of the commercial and industrial area of the community as TIF districts, we think we need to be a little more specific and have more guidance in when we're going to say yes or no in providing assistance through tax increment financing for a project. So just, we want to state that, take, have you keep that in mind. Tax increment financing in BDI, I guess the question begs, why would we need to use it? It's pretty much developed that we looked at the expansion of the industrial park area through the extension of, or expansion of Scott Six Industrial Park. And the point is that there are a few small parcels still left that could be developed. There are some existing parcels that there is the potential in some form for expansion to occur on those. And there's even, which those are in the green, the vacant parcels are those in the red. And then there's one example that we could give and maybe there are others depending upon the property owners, is the, the potential for the redevelopment of the site, that the building on that site may not be the best use of that land and redevelopment of that site may be a potential. So tax increment financing may be a tool that we could use to facilitate and encourage a project to occur in this area that may not occur if we didn't provide them some sort of assistance through tax increment financing.
Is that a brownfield, the brown spot?
No, it's not a brownfield. It's just, it's R and Boggs and it's a building that's, it's a building that's been for sale or leased for some time. It's, the configuration of the building doesn't make it reusable very well, so that the potential may be there to redevelop the site.
So you put it there in terms of this is a maybe?
Correct.
And where is Blooming Prairie at?
Blooming Prairie is this green here.
David, you, you pointed out various plots on that, but if we do the district, it will apply to the entire district, is that not correct?
The entire area?
Right.
Well, that's something I'm going to talk about next. There are four approaches, and these are approaches we could use in many different areas, but looking at BDI, there are four approaches we could use to designate TIF districts in the entire BDI area. One approach would be to designate each individual parcel as a TIF district. Develop an urban renewal plan for that parcel, adopt a TIF district for it. Example in the past would be the Villa Garden project in which there's a project specific, we designated the parcel of land for that project and we established tax increment financing for that. A second approach would be to designate the entire area, BDI area, as one TIF district. So that, those are the two, I guess, extreme examples of how we could establish TIF districts. Then in between, there are two more examples that we have listed. One is at this point in time, we only designate a portion of BDI as a TIF district. The council finds for whatever reasons for the public good that only a portion of the area should be designated at this point and maybe in the future will designate the rest, but that's to be seen in the future. The last approach is to designate more than one TIF district, to designate more than one TIF district in BDI, that we would have several TIF districts. We looked at a set of criteria or issues to try to decide which approach may be the most appropriate in this circumstance. And we looked at issues of what may be more proactive versus reactive to development projects. There's a 20-year time limit for a TIF district if you designate it for economic development purposes. How does using these different approaches impact that? The third issue was the comprehensiveness at establishing goals for the area. You know, if you're just designating each parcel, you're not looking very comprehensively at the whole area or a part of the area, but you start to focus parcel by parcel. Or the opposite of designating the entire area, establishing goals for the entire area. The next category is the ability to manage and project future TIF revenues, which is a critical component in terms of establishing a TIF district. We want to ensure that there's adequate incremental tax revenue in the district to pay for what we have in mind, whether it's a project-specific funding issue or whether it's an area-wide specific, or an area-wide issue such as an infrastructure improvement. So we looked at that issue. We also looked at the TIF revenue generated by a parcel, where can it be used? You know, if we just designate a parcel, it could only be used with, on that parcel. But if we designate a larger district, we may be able to use TIF revenue from one project or one parcel in another area in the TIF district. So those were issues that we looked at in trying to decide which of the approaches we would recommend using. I have listed here that then staff is recommending designating more than one TIF district in the BDI area. And it's, again, it's one of those middle approaches in terms of proactive or reactive. It could be proactive, we'd have the tools in place, but we'd have two or more, we recommended three TIF districts, but we'd have those in place and we could establish those at the beginning. Secondly, the 20-year time limit issue, that's for the district. And once we issue debt, that starts the clock. Well, if we do the entire district or the entire area, we start the clock. Well, we may not have a project in one part of the area for a number of years. And once we start the clock, we start to limit our flexibility in using tax increment financing. So if we divide the area into districts, we would then, at three districts, in essence, we'd have three different clocks depending upon when each of them started. Comprehensiveness criteria, we feel it's important that we at least try to approach revitalization or development in a comprehensive fashion so that doing it parcel by parcel, designation of TIF districts, doesn't allow us to do that. But if we set, establish three TIF districts, we can look at a comprehensive approach at goals within each of those areas. The ability to manage and project future TIF revenues, again, the smaller the area, the fewer parcels you have to worry about within that area, the better able it is to manage what may be the future incremental revenues in each of those districts. Okay? So, you know, the smaller, the better, but at the same time, to address some of these other issues of being more proactive or the 20-year time limit, we don't want it to make, make it to be just one parcel. So we make a few smaller districts, which allows us to better manage what may be those incremental revenues within each district versus the whole 375 acres at one time. And then the last issue is, again, within each of those districts, we would be able to use TIF revenue from one parcel if needed for another parcel within that district. So that gives us some flexibility in terms of that issue. You know, it's not the total flexibility that as we get with the entire area being a TIF district, but it still allows us some flexibility in that regard. So it was trying to balance a number of these issues and one may be the best approach when looking at all of them for this area. So that is why staff recommended designating more than one TIF district in the area. And in the memo, we've shown three TIF districts. And at this point, we're recommending that focusing on infrastructure issues for each of them and mainly focused on street access issues in that there's Industrial Park Road, Heinz Road, kind of also the development over time went from west to east and those areas kind of developed in those segments based on that street infrastructure. So that's why we've recommended the three TIF districts as they're illustrated in your packet.
I want to step back and take a broader approach of this. I don't think it's any secret that I, I have great difficulty seeing where TIF is a viable way to do business. That's pretty, that's, and so every time I bring this up, everybody tells me the TIF is great. Well, if that's the case, why don't we just TIF the whole city? And that way we take politics out, we, everybody have a level playing field and we get our development, everything up as fast as we could. And I'm, and I'm serious about that because it's, you know, and there's, it looks like there's a lot of, much to do about nothing and it looks like there's a lot of potential for politics and deal-making going on here. And this way it'd be out in the open. You come here, you get a TIF, that's it.
Again, staff recommends that council establishes a set of criteria in which they will look at and follow when, to decide for what type of project they will provide tax increment financing.
Well, maybe the council will take a look at if it's good, why is, if, if some is good, why is it far better?
In our time, I mean that's-
No, 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 no. I'm serious.
It's a specific area for development.
It's a specific area for development.
Well, but we want to develop every place in the city that there, that's...
Where are you coming up with that?
Well, we do. Just look at the, look at our development maps before, we went through every part of it.
Well, to create a level playing field, could you just answer that? Why wouldn't there be a philosophical reason to do the whole city? If we're not basing it necessarily on blighted areas, why not TIF the whole city, and then take, people just come to the council and ask for whatever the guidelines we set down in regards to a TIF? Why go through each little spot and keep adding more and more?
I'm not sure that's a fair question, David.
I think it is a fair question.
I think that's a political question.
No, no, no.
But not a staff question.
But the politics of it is a message that works.
It's a mechanism you could do.
What would be the benefits of it? I mean, Ernie, this is, we get staff recommendations for TIFs and how we do development. I think it's a legitimate question to hear.
Staff is doing what the Economic Development Committee asks staff to do.
Well, but also, there's recommendations that have come from staff in terms of development and staff, including our city manager. And so we're, I'm just trying to get a feel, why not, what are the advantage or disadvantages to doing the whole city? I have other questions, too, but this is one, I'm just following up on what Ervin says.
A disadvantage may be that you want to designate a certain type of development in a certain area. So you develop a plan that focuses on that type of development in that particular area. You may have specific goals that you wish to achieve within that area that you want to focus those TIF dollars towards. So it would be much more difficult to do a citywide urban renewal plan in TIF district to then start to focus specific efforts within that. Also, there's the, TIF, managing, the ability to manage and project the future TIF revenue, that would become, I think, nightmarish, difficult to do on a community-wide basis. Would it be possible? I would say yes, but I think that issue starts to become more difficult, the larger the area, the more parcels you have included.
To address that, how, why is it, what is, what is the management of those, of those revenues?
You, the TIF increment is the increase in value between a base year and a future year.
Right.
Okay? And that increment in value is based on then all the parcels in that area.
Okay.
Okay? So when you have made it community-wide, it becomes much more difficult to project what may be that incremental value than if you have a small, very defined area, in terms of what may be the incremental value in that small, defined area.
That, that puzzles me all the time. Anyway, you've made an attempt to answer my question, I appreciate that.
What do you want from us? I mean, obviously, we're, you're asking whether or not we're interested in, in TIF-ing part or all of BDI, doing what the staff recommends, putting in three parcels, or maybe you're asking us for some indication as to whether we'd like you to proceed with this.
The Economic Development Committee, going to get together some criteria for what we'd want built on that area, would you leave that up to staff?
My suspicion is that would be a combination.
We already have some pretty good...
Criteria going. I've got a couple of questions, because I brought this up, looking at time-sensitive, and as I recall, it takes us about eight to 10 weeks to put together a site-specific. By the time we go through all the various readings and so forth, and public hearings and what have you, and that was what spurred my original question about this. And the other piece of it was that part of this park is getting very old, and revitalization was, was a possibility in there, particularly with changes in equipment and machinery, taxing and so forth, that this may well be before us, before we know it. Site-specific doesn't get us into this bind of trying to make the long-range projections, but it does make a timeline that may not be appealing to someone looking at the Boggs property. You say it's been sitting there for about a year and revitalization. Would you recommend going with site-specific for revitalization? Instead of making three different, quote, "areas," is there anything that we could look at for undeveloped property or something to do with revitalization of property and/or expansion? I don't know whether that's a possible thing, to carve it up in that way, because obviously it has taken, it's still not quite built out. And we're, like, close to 40 years into the life of that park, so the infrastructure is, is quite different at different locations.
Well, I think, I don't know if I fully understand your question, but the task that was given to the staff from the Economic Development Committee was that, or as I heard it, was that the committee wanted to have a tool in place for when we may want to use tax increment financing.
And you've done that. I'm, I'm just asking some more what-ifs. So, no, there's nothing wrong with the presentation that you brought to us, and it wasn't that this information was asked for before. But we asked for the pros and cons, because we were not set one way or the other, we just wanted information and things to think about, and, and these are a couple of things that have crossed my mind now, as I've read through your stuff and thought about it some more.
Wouldn't it be really difficult, though, to be site-specific on where someone might want to renovate or, or expand? I mean, we have no idea if someone would come in and they could...
To be proactive, it would be difficult. You'd want, you'd want to work with the property owner to, to establish a specific plan for that parcel, which means you would wait until that parcel owner was ready to develop or redevelop or add on to the property. I think it would become difficult to come up with rationale in order to designate a parcel, but leave it very general. I believe that would be stretching the intent of the urban renewal.
Because you could be reactive to it.
Correct, you could be reactive.
Do you think new projects coming in for totally undeveloped land, do you think the 10 weeks is an orbit amount of time to make this process happen if, if the council gives a preliminary, yes, we're very interested in making this happen?
Now, that 10 to 12-week time period is based on a normal council...
Schedule.
Meeting.
Okay.
That, too.
Is it a normal council or a normal council time?
Time schedule, meeting schedule.
You didn't mention what council could have been.
But there are, there are public hearing, there are sometimes things that are required by the law, right, for publishing of...
Correct, there are things, but there are abilities to waive readings, there are abilities to combine resolutions on agendas with public hearings. We have a history of having the public hearing and the resolution at a separate meeting. I mean, there are ways to shrink that time.
Okay, give us the timeline if, if we shrunk it to...
Days.
No?
No, that would...
No, there's still some time, published notice and so forth.
It would probably be 60 days. I mean, because I believe we have to give 30 days notice. No, I would have to look again. I think 60 days would be about as brief as we could get it.
But if we had...
From the beginning of designing the plan, sending out the notices, that would probably be the briefest.
You're talking about the time it would take to set it up in the TIF districts?
Correct.
Go through. Because I see some real advantages to site-specific in there, and I don't think we've ever been asked for anything out of the BDI. And that was one of the things that spurred the original discussion.
What's the advantage of site-specific as opposed to having that BDI carved into three districts? If you have three districts, all of which are...
Because of the timeline.
No, no, but if you have them all, and you go through the TIF, we designate three TIF districts out there. How does a site-specific project, what, what makes that better than already having the district designated?
Well, there's a couple of things that cross my mind on it as I started thinking about it, and, and one of the things David just said is one of the things that I was looking at. So you have the district, therefore, this project comes in, and it stays in the district for 20 years, because five years later, another district comes in, but there isn't any use for that dollar, perhaps for adjoining, and to get it back on the tax rolls. And if we, we do site-specific, we would have a project when the infrastructure or whatever the rebate schedule was, when that, if we set it up five years, why it would then come back onto the tax rolls sooner rather than later.
How would you select the sites?
Exactly.
By request.
Well, in other words, then, we don't do it?
That's exactly right, that's what I'm saying.
Then, then what you're saying is we don't do anything?
I'm weighing it both ways at this point.
But if you're going to go site-specific, then we don't do any of what we suggested.
Well, I think that's what he was pointing out, that site-specific meant wait for the request to come in. And then that was why I was talking about how, how fast can we turn around and, and create a site district like we did for Villa Gardens.
Well, maybe it won't, maybe we won't have to wait 40 years for it to be ready.
I have a couple of questions, but first, do you have an overhead of the three carved-up districts on our CD?
Yeah, it's impossible to see.
I'm sorry.
Well, the lines go different ways if you really sit in here and look at it, but yes, it is difficult. There you go. Can you put the empty parcel thing sort of on the edge there? Put the two of them up there together?
This one? Is this one...
Yeah, so it's the red, the reds are the empties, so those are all in the, the green area, which was probably the, the later area to develop, if we truly develop from the west to the east.
Correct.
And most, well, there's some in the middle section that has room to expand.
Limited room, but potentially.
But if you, if you set up a TIF district, the clock doesn't start until somebody takes advantage of the TIF. So you could set it up, and it wouldn't even, conceivably, it wouldn't, could wait 20 years before you had the first one.
Yeah, that's North Gate, has, has been sitting there for a long time.
That's what I think's so good about this plan.
Well, I mean, it appears to me that the whole idea of creating three TIF districts is to have this tool available to us, if there is a project that we feel is worth encouraging. And it meets the guidelines. If there isn't, we don't do anything. But the advantage of having it designated is that we don't have to go through this long timeframe. If someone comes in and wants to act in a more expeditious fashion, we're prepared to do it time-wise. And second, I think, it perhaps sends a message to those folks that they have a sympathetic ear from the city, that the city is interested in seeing development occur, and perhaps might encourage development to occur. I mean, isn't that the whole idea? What are we talking about?
Ernie, I think, Ernie...
I wanted both sides out here, I really wanted to talk about it.
I think you made my point of why we should designate the whole city as a TIF district. No, no, no. Because until somebody comes, it just sits there.
How would you pick an area, then? Would you get a big hat?
Well, we're waiting, we're waiting, we're reactive. So now we...
No, in this case, we aren't reactive, we are acting. No one has asked us for anything in this place. We look at this, and we, we perceive that something may occur. We've already done this across the street.
Yeah, but we're, but now we're backing off and say, "Well, maybe there's pros and cons." My point is, why don't you just do the TIF the whole city? And when somebody comes... No, no, I'm not, I'm serious. Because if somebody comes in with a, with a good plan, you got it, and I mean, it only tells where to...
But that theory hasn't been accepted well.
Pardon?
That theory has not been accepted well.
Well, it's, it's other theory, I haven't accepted very well either. But that doesn't make any difference, right?
I think the majority will.
All right, folks. David? Yeah, I don't think speed is such a good thing. If we're looking at major projects, I think it's okay to have 60 to 90 days to set up a district and then consider it. So that's one issue. The other thing is, you're asking for guidelines. My understanding is, we have guidelines. We have guidelines for financial assistance, which actually were thrown out in part for one project. And also, we have guidelines that you put here, right here in the, from the comprehensive plan. Consider financial incentives and programs to facilitate achieving economic development goals. More specifically, it states, "A strategy to achieve these goals is to focus incentives on infrastructure development, worker training and retraining, and an efficient, timely, and fair development review process." So we're working on the review process in terms of redoing our code, that's one thing. But it doesn't seem that we ever are focusing on other specifics for the strategic plan. I'm told time and time again that staff uses strategic plan, comprehensive plan, to make these proposals as far as tax abatements, that it's part of the strategic plan. But here, we have that the specifics are something totally different. So I just don't quite understand where this is all coming from, from Economic Development Commission and/or the staff. It seems we're ignoring our goals that we already have there. And I don't see what new goals will just be ignored anyhow down the road. Is there any kind of response to that? Don't we have these specific goals already? What kind of goals are you asking for?
We would be asking for what particular types of projects within each district, if there's any additional criteria above and beyond what we already have. And those are things that are going to need from the, come from the council in terms of the goals they wish to achieve.
So you're saying, these goals that we have, kind of our mood?
No.
No.
Well, we don't seem to play by them. If they're, they're in here, have we been talking about infrastructure development and worker training and retraining? I've never heard that talk.
Well, I don't think that those are the only two goals, are they?
These are, these are specific things that are in here from our comprehensive plan, but yet I'm told comprehensive plan is what is our bible, we're basing things on. And so I don't see that.
Any project that comes up, if one ever does come up, will require council approval. At that time, we'll, we'll determine whether or not it meets guidelines that we set out. All we're talking about tonight is whether or not we wish to designate that area as a TIF district. If we'd like to get that done, so that if, if anybody chooses to apply for a TIF, at least that mechanism is through. Is that not what we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
That's right.
Well, of course, Ernie, that, I mean, that's somewhat disingenuous, because this, we set a TIF district with the assumption that we're going to give TIFs in some form, and our history that we have is, at least in the last couple of years, is that we give tax abatements as opposed to other possible methods. So I, I would argue that we, we should stick with the, the goals that we have if we're going to do TIFs, and that should be part of this.
Well, that could well be, and I think that is project-specific, that we're talking about whether or not we want to designate this area as a TIF district, and whether or not we want staff to go ahead and, and do that. I mean, that's what we're talking about.
I like the three districts, and...
They will come later.
Correct. As we start to work on the plan, we're going to have to get more specific. At this point, it's, do you want to perceive, proceed with designating...
How many would like to proceed with the TIF district?
Proceed.
Good.
You gotta go.
And I would like to see a strong look at the three districts.
I think we're saying go with three, are we not?
Yeah, yes.
Well, we had four possibilities up there, and I'm just saying, I'm looking... Well, we had four possibilities up there, and I'm just saying, I'm looking at the three district possibility.
All right, folks. How many would like to see us proceed with the recommendation from the staff to do the three that were just presented?
I'm not voting again, Ernie. I just said yes.
You said yes to the three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
David?
And that we'll work with Economic Development Committee on the specifics.
Thank you, David.
Great time.
Incidentally.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Great job.
That really is a very good presentation. I'd like to know, where did the staff recommendation come from?
Where did it come from?
Yeah.
The city manager.
Oh, get out of here. I think you did a remarkable job.
Very good job.
Very well presented.
Thanks.
Thank you. And we're gonna take a quick break, and it will be quick.
Five after?
Five or six after, yeah.
I'm just trying to help you out.
I'm just trying to help you out.
Hang around.
Whatever you're paying. Whatever you're paying. We were recommending to the staff, I forgot the example words, and you said it came as a comprehensive plan. And so... I think you gave me a memo there earlier today.
You let me know if they are.
My hometown.
But, you know, for here.
Well, now, yeah, and now I'm saying that there's TIFs that were brought out in your report.
Just go ahead and...
It was more specific for tax plan.
Just go ahead and...
That those should be just for the specific...
Sure it'll be filmed, take the whole thing, huh?
Yep, yep, yep. Glad to do it.
Yes.
For infrastructure development, worker training, and retraining. Focus incentives. So those have not been brought up in as part of the comprehensive plan. Yeah, let me, I'll get it. Who's the sponsor? From...
I will tell you every five... Oh, I'm watching. I got a clock on here. I think I'd start to have a clock at about twenty or something like that.
It's gonna lay. Now, if we're gonna use...
I was just saying, we've already talked about that, and now we're trying to get the point of decision. It's what I, what I want.
Okay, you can go ahead with the dam project.
Thank you. That's all I needed. Because I understood you from the, from the work session on the Capitol program, you wanted more information about the dam project and the pedestrian bridge associated with that. As a whole, the total project cost is about $2.5 million. About 1.3 of that is for renovations to the dam. About 1.2 million of it is for the pedestrian bridge. And I think specifically, what you wanted me to focus on tonight is, what are you getting for your 1.2 million dollars for the pedestrian bridge, and why does it cost that? Just before we dive into that, I thought I'd start some pictures around and take a look at some of the work that we'll be doing on the dam. It shows a hole that we cut into the dam to look inside it, what we saw inside there. In fact, it is hollow, and we need to fill up that space. And we'll be refinishing the downstream face of the dam. And also, there's a shot of the view that you'll see from the pedestrian bridge there. I'll start these around. Into the specifics on the bridge, the total bridge length is about 770 feet. It starts, excuse me, starts at the Isle River Power Restaurant, crosses the dam, and then, that's about 300 feet of it. And then, the next 470 feet is getting on across the spillway area. This is looking at it from the side. This is looking down from the top here. What a lot of people don't realize exists is there's an old concrete spillway off in the woods there. And a few times a year, when the water gets so deep flowing over the dam, it also flows over the spillway and off through this area here. The original plan was to simply put in a pedestrian bridge across the dam and allow them to get off and to walk on across that spillway. The two downsides to that is, is the, first of all, water flowing, when it's flowing over the spillway, creates a significant hazard for pedestrians, and it is in a remote area, so we were worried about the safety there. Also, if you've been on that spillway, although most of us can walk it, it doesn't come close to meeting the ADA requirements. So the only way to cover both of those things is to look at the whole works there. We had three criteria that we looked at when we designed this. We had functionality, durability, and cost. Certainly, the functionality, we, I talked about that a little bit, and we wanted to span the entire area there. And in addition to that, like we talked about it, budget time is the rescue operation aspects of it. And here, you can see on the view from above that we put some staging platforms in there so that they can work. What they have is an inflatable boat that they pull back and forth with ropes there to stage, they being the sheriff's office, to stage rescues of people to get in around this dam. And we also wanted something that was gonna create good views and some opportunities for fishing. This is what the bumpouts will look like. The bridge will come through here, and this will be on the downstream face, and this will be on the upstream face. And as far as durability, we wanted to put something out here that's gonna require a minimum amount of maintenance, because it is over a dam. We don't want to be out there repainting it or patching repairs. So we selected something out of Core Ten Steel, which is a self-weathering steel, which should do very well in that location. And as far as cost, we looked at building this thing as much as possible with off-the-shelf type items. And that is that these bridges, all these spans that you see here are prefabricated trusses, including those boat trusses that you see there. And this will be stock railing all across here. And we're putting in, we've got stock railing on the boat trusses as well with a rubber rail built into that. And the railing going out around the front of the dam there will be made out of stainless steel for, primarily because if we use the Core Ten Steel out around there, because that'll be on concrete, it would run stains down the face of the dam.
Make it look like the dental building.
Yes, if concrete does stain. Here's a couple drawings that Newman Munson did for us. One is just another view of that bumpout and how you might expect it to look. And this is also a view that you would expect to see as you're crossing the bridge. And I'll pass these around as well.
That bridge does sit directly on top of the dam.
Almost. When we started, the way it started to be designed is to put that exactly on top of the dam. And the frustrating aspect there is to see the water go over...
You need to be off to the side.
Yeah, you have to hang over the rail again. And we thought that that's not a good situation. So we shifted the dam, or the bridge, a little bit upstream so that when you're on the south side of the bridge and look over the railing, you see the water going down below you there.
So you are building a whole new structure, basically.
The old bridge, if you call it that, comes off. It's rusted out, it's gone.
We have bicycle trails where we go through areas where we say, careful, it can flood going through bridges and stuff. And so I wonder, what would, it doesn't seem that much of a danger to me if we do have an exit there. I guess we would have to have a ramp to make it accessible for people with disabilities and also for bicyclists to get up there. What would be the saving, as Dee had proposed before, as a possible cut in the cost? What would be the saving if we eliminate it? Here, over to there, and just came out down here.
We would need to rebuild the spillway and flatten it out. And Steve, do you have any of those numbers we did this evening? If we were to rebuild the spillway? This is Steve Jacobson. He's our designer with NMW that's been working on it.
Do you come on up here?
Yeah, one of the differences I'd like to point out between this and where we have our other, I'd call low-water crossings, is the velocity. That the velocity, the water going over the spillway is significantly higher than what we experience in some of those other locations.
Duration.
And duration is...
Be like ninety-three?
Well, it can run over that spillway every year for like a month at a time, as opposed to small creeks where it might come up at night for a few hours.
Fairly deep and fairly quick.
Yeah.
It's, it's...
Well, part of my question was, because we're looking at tight budget, was whether there was any way to just do the bridge over the dam right now and dead-end it at that point? What would the cost be?
Yeah, we probably, it'd probably result in savings of close to $500,000.
What would it cost at some future time to either level out the spillway, which it doesn't sound like that would be a feasible way of doing it if we have water running that deep and that fast? But if you wanted to add that $500,000 savings three years from now, how much would that $500,000 cost?
Part of it. Well, I was gonna say, one of the economies of doing the dam and the bridge, and all the bridge at the same time is the mobilization. What we're estimating is mobilization costs of about $100,000 to bring in all the equipment that you need to do this and get it done. The Isle River Corridor Trail, for example, a similar project along the river, mobilization expenses on that were $140,000. We're estimating these at $100,000 because it's a little more localized. That's a repeat cost if you break this up into more than one project.
What's the cost, these areas that we're seeing being hollowed out of? Now, you're telling us you're gonna fill those in?
Yes.
What's the cost of just the...
That's the 1.3 million dollars.
That's 1.3 million?
That's not this project.
Yeah, well, that's a part of this project.
But this is the 1.2.
That's 2.5.
The bridge is the 1.2. The dam is the 1.3.
Right, it's the 1.2.
We do really three things for that money. We fill the voids in the dam, we put a new downstream face on it, and we rebuild some of the piers along there, and cut others off so that the debris goes over the dam rather than getting hung up on it.
I thought the dam was 2 million.
The estimate that you see in the program there has been refined because we're working on the design of this right now. The cost estimate that we have in front of us now is newer than what was used in preparing the budget, so it's hit down a little bit.
So this is a new savings we're adding to the budget is another million dollars?
Ask Rick. He's working on it all the time.
Yeah. We hope it's gonna come in.
Those numbers that you have in this budget are at least six months old. So I can see why it might have changed. Rick can tell you that.
Yeah. And one of the reasons that we're not going back to Kevin and saying, let's cut this out of the budget now. We got some surplus there, is this is not something we do every day. Estimating these costs, you know, it could come in either direction of that by a significant amount. So we wanna be sure that that money's there.
If you, if you were to go ahead to go with this, when would construction start?
We would want to begin this summer and finish up this year, hopefully.
Hey, if this would be by the end of the construction season, it would all be finished?
Really, that really depends on the water, on the river. If the water, if we get a lot of water this spring and the water stays up, it's difficult to do this work, and it might have to go into the next year.
Okay, now, one of the, just one thing, why was the dam built hollow? Why are you gonna fill it?
It wasn't built hollow to begin with. It was built with wood cribs that were filled with rock, and then concrete was coated on the outside of that. And what is missing now is all the wood. It is deteriorated. It's gone completely. And if you look at those pictures, you'll see some of the nails sticking out. Those used to go into wood, but the wood's not there anymore.
Okay, so what would you do, go ahead and pump concrete in?
Yes.
Fill it up with concrete?
Yes.
Well, perhaps then, if we're looking at, I guess 700,000 or so less than we originally thought four or five months ago when this budget came out, maybe we can do the bid without the extension here and do that as an...
Alternate.
Alternate. And if we get good prices, then we go from there. Is that something that's possible to do?
We could do that with alternates, yes. One thing I want to point out, in addition to this, the costs that I've given you today are estimated construction costs. What's in the budget includes design, construction, inspection, administration, and easements. Now, that doesn't fill that entire gap between this estimate and what's in the book, but it eats up a portion of that. So not that total amount of savings.
But still significant. There's some there. And an add-on isn't that hard to do in a bid, is it?
No. Sometimes it spooks contractors a little bit where you may not get their best price if they don't know if, especially like on mobilization, if they don't know if they're gonna be there to do the whole thing or half of it.
And this, is any, is any of this absolutely necessary for the function of the dam and the waterworks? Or are we really just building a 1.2 million dollar trail? That's my question.
Well, there's the safety component, and that is for the helping with the rescues that occur along the dam. They average about one a year.
I guess...
One rescue a year?
I think the question is, obviously, this is a very attractive facility, and it's intended, I'm sure, to be attractive for folks to walk out, watch the water run over the dam, which is certainly far more sophisticated than you'd have to have just to have a walkway for rescues.
Well, it is and it isn't in the sense that in order to allow them to work, to do the rescue operations, they need to be past the face of the dam a little bit to make that work well. And that's what these bumpouts do, and then they serve the secondary function of just being a lookout.
What you're really saying is that once you get the major portion of that isn't tied up in railings and accouterments, it's all, it's the basis.
The structure, it's the concrete.
Right. I can't imagine, when you look at the cost of setting up, and if that is in the neighborhood of $150,000, I can't imagine the council will tell us to build only that portion over the dam when it would cost us an additional 150. Well, the 150 is just the cost of mobilization, I think is what the term you used. But that second portion of that probably would not get nearly as good a bid as the entire project.
It won't be as big, you won't have the economy of scale.
Right.
Well, okay, all right, besides going, getting from one side of the river to the other or looking at the river from on top of it, what other functions does this provide?
Fishing.
It's fishing, and there's more to just... It's fishing, and there's more to just crossing the river there. This is part of the Iowa River Corridor Trail system that, that's been in the works for decades.
Are the trails, are the other, do they hook onto trails immediately?
Yes, yeah, the trails are built on, on our side of it.
Okay, so basically, it completes the trail system?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was pretty sure, because the bridge kinda looks like it comes to the end, but I guess that's just a railing.
Rick, on, on the east end of this, where the bridge ends, now the spillway runs around, where does, if, so you walk across the, the dam and across the bridge, and the water's running over the spillway seven feet deep, and you get to the east abutment, how do you get to the trail?
There's, there's fill right in this area here.
Where is the water, does water, oh, I see, in the middle there, the water comes?
Yeah, it all goes underneath there.
I see, all right, fine, thank you.
Yeah, this ties into the set of trails that are in on the peninsula right there.
The way you show the spillway, so, drop down to where it says spillway, it looks to me like the spillway runs off the east end.
It all goes off through there.
Oh, see what?
This is, this is the crest of the spillway, not the, not the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The water flows perpendicular to it, not.
All right, that's kinda the basin.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
It's a rim.
Right.
Now, two things. You said that you were restructuring this to make it less likely to catch debris, and then what, and what is going, if?
Right now, if you look at the dam, there are seven?
Right.
Okay, seven piers, every, every 50 feet is coming up, and they're all gonna be cut off except either end and the one in the middle.
That's, that's a terrific, now, okay, now, is there any, will there be any possibility of, of, in the spillway area of anything collecting debris?
No. In this area?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's, it's kind of woods right now, and.
But I mean, as far as the structure you put in?
This structure already exists.
No, the dam, the bridge.
Well, the bridge, the bridge make it very difficult for, for debris to get through.
No worse than the structure that's already there.
Okay, so it's, it's at least as good as, it's, it is no, there's no downside for debris passing through by putting in a bridge?
Correct.
Okay. I'd say, let's go forward.
Any other questions for Rick and company?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really want to make a decision tonight, I guess?
Well, I think the decision is probably gonna, well, no, I don't care. Obviously, we're not gonna make a decision till bid comes in anyway. We either leave it in the CIP or we don't.
Well, I mean, that's what I mean, there was talk about taking it out. It seemed that, do it now, don't you think?
Fine with me, I mean.
I'm for it.
I don't, I sense.
I'll certainly take this project over the Waterworks Park.
Well, I mean, is there a consensus that we leave this in the CIP?
But now with that consensus, now with Dee's idea.
A really important part of this is that, is that rescue operation.
That's why I ask about the splitting the project.
That's, that's very.
Well, and we know we have to do the dam, because if we don't keep the water level up and something happens to the dam, we're in trouble on our water sources.
Okay, folks.
This one is a lot more.
So we have?
It stays in.
It stays in?
Yes, as far as I can.
Well, then the only thing, obviously, if we got some relacious bids that we couldn't live with, we don't ever have to take a bid, so.
We can go out for second bids.
Okay, the next item is the folks to work on the seats negotiation team, and I had suggested last time that Brad Vanderoff and O'Donnell, question?
I think that's a good idea. Dee works in the last committee and Mike's on the advisory committee, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was distracted. What was, what was, what did you say?
Talking about the seats negotiation committee. We have to negotiate a new contract with seats. My understanding, Steve, is that the contract runs through the end of this year?
No, in, next year, we're a year ahead of time.
June of 2003. All right, so the timing is that?
The timings allow us enough time to put together an agreement, so we just very quickly blend into the next one.
This is a very difficult process.
It's a very difficult process, yes.
It was really one of the most difficult things that's happened since I've been on the council the last time. It was just.
Well, it's made more difficult after news today.
Right.
Well, anyway, this is not gonna be easy, and I, I think it's great that we start early.
Well, I'd like to be on there, I think, I have a perspective of working at the senior, at the senior dining at the senior center, and have familiarity with it, and new blood in there, I think it might be good to have that and mix with the, the new and the older.
Who's old?
Not, not old.
Experienced.
City council experience.
That's a better way to put it, yes, certainly.
Well, I certainly have no problem with new blood, but I do think that because of the experience with Dee and Mike, to do the job, that's a council.
We both are on the.
I know.
Seats committee, so we are familiar with the.
Everybody quit playing with the mic. How many would concur with Dee and Mike being on the committee?
I would like to do it.
All right, that's it, council time. Going home time.
Oh, I, yeah, I got some things. One, here, I'll start off with the easy stuff, hopefully. Two years already we've been on council, can we get a new picture out there on the front?
No. Hi.
I don't think anything's changed.
Looks better than.
He has a new haircut.
New haircut, I'm matching cross here, a little less, I got a little less here. Can we do a group photo again?
If you want a group photo, we can do one. Sure. Do you want to do it before, like, before a formal meeting sometime?
Yeah, just let us know ahead of time.
We'll comb our hair.
I want to get a buzz.
Let me check and I'll put a note.
All right.
That I want to see.
I might get a.
She'll let us know.
So we got the easy part done, now what's the difficult part?
All right, a week or two ago, in the info packet, I put an article about municipal income tax that was from the National League of Cities magazine, and I put it there with the idea that we, we could perhaps discuss the idea of a resolution in support of the state legislature adopting a municipal income tax. One of the reasons is the state league of cities is, one of their objectives this year in lobbying is looking at the diversity of revenue streams. And I think this is a diversity of revenue stream that we need to have available to us, especially in this time of, of rollbacks and other cuts from the state. And it's a very progressive income tax, and I don't want to do the whole discussion now about the res, doing a resolution, but I'd like to put this on a work session that we can talk some more about this.
I, I think it'd be a good idea, because I think there's a, there's a, some misconception about it, and that is that you pay where you live, so everybody's gonna move out. It's where the money is earned is where it is.
Steven, would it be a surtax on your income tax, like the school, just for where it'd be an actual tax on your income?
It would be in, most likely, an actual tax on the income. So in some cities, like in Ohio has it, they have from, anywhere from a half percent or a quarter percent up to 2%, and they work out, sometimes they do it as a region, they set up a regional taxing body to collect it and then distribute it. Sometimes you get credits for working in one city and living in another city, there's different ways of doing it. I think we need to get the talk in the state legislature about this. They're afraid to mention this word, municipal income tax. It's a much more progressive tax than sales and property tax, and I think it's one that we need to have that option.
Well, I guess we really can't discuss it, other than, is there, are there three folks who would be interested in putting that on a work session?
Let me just say this, until after the state legislature meets and see whether they look at studying the entire tax situation in Iowa, I think we're premature. If they set that up, then I think League of Cities will move into all of the areas to see how it could be redesigned. But this legislature isn't gonna touch it at this point.
Well, that's why I think we need to start now and start getting the ball rolling. This is not something they're gonna pass this year, certainly, but we need to.
But that, you can't do that. Well, you do the total study of the tax law in Iowa and look at different possibilities. So I, I would wait and see what legislature does. The other piece that I can tell you is, right now, at the National League of Cities, we are in the middle of looking at total taxing, and that could be more information to go with it when we have a talk about it, and that will be coming out, hopefully, with Mark.
Does that mean you're not interested in putting on a work session?
That's why I would like to wait.
Okay.
Let, let me offer a little bit of a, a comment on where you're going. I think if we could get a relatively, say, a half-hour presentation on it, just somebody to say pros and cons, would know, just what is it? It would allow us to start looking into what is coming up and we're, we'd be more alert to what is going on, and I, and with no, with no intention of doing anything about except for information to us as a council.
All right, who is interested in looking at income taxes and options?
Just, just looking at the idea of it. I would, I would support that.
Well, it's not legal yet, so I don't think it's there, it's not even a possibility.
Well, even at this point, we don't have enough interest to, to put it on a work session.
Just to answer Connie, the point is not that it's legal, of course it's not legal, the idea is, just like with the bond bill, we're being proactive in that we want, we want to push the legislature. Dee, it's, it's not gonna get mentioned unless cities and individuals start pushing it.
Well, it'll get mentioned if we get a state committee of legislators looking at the total tax situation.
Dee, you have a league that's even afraid to mention it in their list of things to do in the lobby.
But they don't mention it because what they have to get done first is to have a look at the total overhaul of the tax.
Okay, we're done with that one, what's next?
Steve?
Yes.
Did you find anything out about the three readings in Corville on one night, how they did that?
We, we have the information, and I'm not sure how they did it.
One, two, and three.
Well, no, there's, there are, there's certain requirements. In fact, Ellen and I were talking about it last week or so, and, and no, I don't know how they did it.
Did they adjourn meeting and reconvene?
The information that we have, the packet of information that Marion got, didn't show it that way at all. And apparently, their bond council was sitting in the audience, and no one challenged it. There, I, I think there might.